I went out the day after the election and I got my truck.
Ready on the, you guys ready on the right?
We're ready, we're always ready, good.
We're ready.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the November session of the Lewisville Town Council meeting. It's always good to see so many faces in the audience tonight. We're always glad we have folks to be part of the business of the town of Lewisville and to watch your town council in action. We'll start this evening with an invocation by Pastor Tom Lee and then it will be followed by a pledge of allegiance led by council member Ed Smith. If you'll join us and stand if you're able.
Let us pray. My fathers, we join together at night to take care of the business of our community and pray that your presence will be with us and we may be aware of that presence. We give you thanks for the many blessings that we have in life, for the gift of life itself, for life in this community and for the freedom we have in the nation in which we live. We pray a special blessings upon those who give leadership to our community, give them direction. We pray for our nation, give to leaders by nation direction. And we pray in a special way for those who suffer, especially those people in Texas who've gone through this tragedy, and for those who continue to suffer from hurricanes and other natural disasters. And we pray that your presence will be with us all as we continue through this night and through the days of the week ahead before we ask for the price of any.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Pastor Tom. It's always great to have you here. You are one of the reasons why Lewisville is a great place to live, so it's always good to see your smiling face with us. And we'd also like to welcome those of you who are joining us at home from the comfort of your living room on this chilly Thursday evening on either TV Channel 6 or on our website, LewisvilleNC.net, or I'm hoping on Facebook, and Tracy's going to give me a nod if that's indeed the case. Very good. So welcome all of you, no matter where you're viewing or participating in this meeting tonight. This time we'll go through our customary council roll call, starting to my right.
Hi, I'm Jeff Zinger, and I just want to thank everybody in Lewisville who participated Tuesday on exercising their civic duty, and I want to thank them also for giving me the opportunity to serve two more years.
I'm Ed Smith, and good evening. I won't repeat Jeff, but I likewise thank those that have come out and also those that participated Tuesday, very important to our town, so good evening.
Hi, I'm Sandra Mock, and I again appreciate you too, and thank you so much, and another two years, here we go.
I'm Mike Horn, your mayor, and the previous three council members stole my speech, so I won't reiterate what's already been said, but again, our appreciation to those of you who participated in this great experience, as we call the American democracy.
Robert Green, I too would like to thank the citizens of Lewisville for getting out and to vote and enabling me to serve another two years for the town of Lewisville. Thank you.
I'm Ken Sadler, and I appreciate you re-electing these folks who are sitting up here to serve another two years. I won't be back.
Excuse me, I'm Fred Franklin. It's been a pleasure to serve as a councilman for the last two years, and I look forward to the next two years.
Councilman Sadler, were you paraphrasing? Was it Douglas MacArthur who said, "I will return"? Your phrase is, "I will not be back"?
For saying that, so.
Very good. We move on to our agenda this evening. We do have several items that were added since our briefing. Councilmembers under 2A, we have added four, and this will be a resolution accepting the resignation of Marcy Gallman from the Parks and Recreation Board, and obviously with Ms. Gallman's election to the council, she will take on a new role as a council member and leave our Parks and Recreation Board, which she has served as its chairperson, very ably for the last two years, I believe, and has done just a terrific job. Under 5A5, we have an addition of, we're going to set a public hearing for Thursday, December 14th, to change the jurisdiction of Glad Acres Road from Forsyth County jurisdiction to the town of Lewisville jurisdiction. That'll follow our public hearing on the voluntary annexation discussion. We have under 6C, the appointment, the addition of the appointment of Ashlyn Sutton to the Student Leadership Committee, and Ashlyn is the daughter of one of our deputies, and so we're really glad that she's going to do that. We have an addition under 7F. Hank has an update on the traffic study that we're participating in with the school system on Robin Hood Road and Lewisville, Vienna. Mrs. Walker, did I get it all done?
Very good.
With that, councilmembers, unless there are any other changes or suggestions, we'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Smith makes the motion, Mr. Zinger makes the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, that's unanimous. Also with us this evening, as we look around the room, are our able town staff, our town manager Hank Perkins, our town attorney Bo Howf, our communications specialist Tracy Krell back there behind the camera, our planner Josh Harold, our town clerk Joyce Walker, and our town finance director Ms. Pam Orell, mother of stacking champion. That's an inside joke. Her son is the Guinness World Record holder for cup stacking record. He holds, still holds it. It's amazing what we have in Lewisville, the resources that are here. Okay, Hank, if you'll take us through the consent agenda, please.
Tonight's consent agenda consists of four items. First, we have Resolution 2017055 for the acceptance and approval of monthly financials for September 2017, the approval of council briefing and action minutes from October 5th, 2017, the approval of council meeting minutes from October 12th, 2017, and lastly, Resolution 2017060, accepting the resignation of Chair Marcy Gallman from the Lewisville Parks Recreation and Cultural Development Board effective November 30th, 2017.
Ladies and gentlemen, the consent agenda are items that generally come before the council that are routine in nature. Any councilmember can ask for any of those items to be pulled off and discussed individually, otherwise we take them as a group. Councilmembers, what's your pleasure?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Zinger makes the motion, Mr. Smith makes the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, that is unanimous. Introductions this evening. Captain Elliott, Lieutenant Shutt, please come forward. We've got a couple of new deputies that you're going to introduce to our town.
I'm Captain Mark Elliott. I'm over the Field Services Division with the Forsyth County Sheriff's Office. This is Lieutenant Shutt. He is the supervisor over community services. Again, we bring two of our finest to the town of Lewisville within transition within the agency. We look forward to working again in partnership with you. These are two of our finest officers. I'd like to read you a little bit about their background and have them come say hello. Bring to you first Corporal Justin Bircham. He's been in law enforcement for approximately six and a half years. He began his, I'm sorry, he had six and a half years prior to coming to the sheriff's office. He began his career in 1998. He started at the Surrey County Sheriff's Office, and he has served with our agency as a school resource officer. He's served in the patrol division, the courtroom section, the domestic violence unit, and now the community services section. He currently lives in Surrey County, has a wife, Michelle. He's been married 19 years, and he has one daughter. He comes to you with an associate's degree from Surrey County Community College in criminal justice. I give you Justin Bircham.
Very good. Would you like to just show your face or say a few words to us?
Oh, I don't know about saying a few words. I'm not supposed to be speaking. I've enjoyed the first three weeks here. Excited about serving the town. Appreciate it.
Welcome, deputy, we're glad you're with us.
Our second deputy tonight, I'd like to give you Wendy Byerly. Wendy is assigned to the Field Services Division, Community Services, to the town of Lewisville. She came to our agency in July of 2016. She came to us with prior law enforcement experience as well. She graduated from basic law enforcement training in 2012 from Forsyth Technical Community College. Deputy Byerly holds a bachelor's degree in social and criminal justice with specializations in homeland security and forensics. She primarily has worked her career in patrol, but she has also mentored at-risk youth, served on the honor guard, and was assigned to the Domestic Violence Task Force and Special Operations Unit in prior agencies. I'd like to give you Deputy Byerly.
Hi, my name's Wendy Byerly. I just want to mention it's an honor to be here in Lewisville, meeting some fantastic people here, and I really look forward to working and engaging with the community, so thank you so much for having me.
Thank you. As I mentioned to our folks earlier before the meeting, Deputy Byerly is already receiving rave reviews from some of our residents who have had the opportunity to experience her professionalism and in the not-so-good light of problems at their homes, but she certainly brought a sense of professionalism and a sense of care and concern that we have grown accustomed to here in Lewisville, so thank you very much for being here. Lieutenant Shutt, man a few words?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
This evening I am.
Again, thank you, thank the town and thank the community for welcoming our deputies. You've also always been so hospitable towards them and allowing us to serve you in this community, and we continue to do so, so thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you all for coming tonight, and we look forward to seeing you folks on the streets. This takes us to our public forum section of our meeting. This will be the first of three opportunities tonight that those here can address the council. There'll be a public forum to hear your comments and share your thoughts about anything of importance in your mind. There'll be an opportunity during a public hearing that we have coming up on a voluntary annexation of Glad Acres, so if you're here to speak on that, please wait till the public hearing on Glad Acres. And then finally, toward the end of the meeting, there'll be one more opportunity for you to share your thoughts with us about what you may have experienced during the meeting or anything that has come to you that you would like to share with our council. With that, we'll open the public forum, the first opportunity for you to address your council. Anyone wish to speak? Anyone wish to speak at all? Very good, thank you. If you'd like to leave written comments, there are forms in the back of the room that you can fill out, and we'll make sure that they are part of the record. This takes us to our public hearing. Joyce, would you like to lead us into our public hearing this evening?
Yes, let me pull up this. Okay, we have had a request for a voluntary annexation of Glad Acres Road into the town. I've placed a map on the screen. We discussed this in the briefing meeting, and all I can say is it's up to you as council to determine whether or not you will admit this acreage into the town.
Very good. Council, we have had a briefing on this before, and we are always pleased when residents or property owners outside of the town of Lewisville choose to want to be part of our community. It says a lot about, number one, hopefully what we're doing here to make them want to become part of our council, and two, it says something about their better judgment that they would like to be part of the town of Lewisville. So with that, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. We do have one individual signed up to speak, Stephen Owen. Stephen, if you'll come up, please, and state your name and address, and make your comments.
Yes, thank you. My name is Stephen Owen. I'm with Stimel Associates. We're a land planning civil engineering firm. We're located at 601 North Trade Street in Winston-Salem, 27101. Mayor Horn, councilmembers, I just want to take a moment to thank you. Nothing really additionally to say, but I'd be happy to answer any questions or if there's anything that you wanted to question about this specifically, I'd just be happy to kind of address anything that you may have.
Very good. Councilmembers, any question for either, for Josh or Mr. Owen? Very good.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Golden rule, never say more than you have to. Council, it's up to us for discussion.
Is there anyone else that might want to speak?
I am not seeing anybody approaching the podium, but is there anyone else who would like to speak, either in support or in opposition to this voluntary annexation? If not, we'll close the public hearing. Thank you, Mr. Franklin. Councilmembers, it's back on our table. If there's no discussion, we'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion.
Second.
Very good. Mrs. Mock makes the motion to accept the voluntary annexation. Mr. Smith makes the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Very good, that's unanimous. Welcome to town. We're awfully glad you're here and hope it'll be a great experience for you, and thank you for the contribution you're making to our community as well. Joyce, you want to walk us through the public hearing that we need to set for next Thursday, please?
Yes, now that you have accepted Glad Acres Road into the town of Lewisville, the legislature requires that we change the jurisdiction from the county to the town, so you will be setting a public hearing for December that will affect that.
So moved.
Second.
Very good. We have a motion by Mr. Zinger, second by Mr. Smith. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Very good, we have that public hearing for Thursday, December 14th, and that passes unanimously. Appointments, Joyce, planning board.
We have in front of you applications for the planning board. I placed two there just in case there might be a tie or some weird number, so if you please make your choices, I'll pick those up.
Very good. And let me first, let's see, Mr. Scanlon, you're here in the audience, if you raise your hand, very good, is Ms. Sisk here? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Scanlon, for being here.
We don't have to be.
Get a couple of bear.
While Mrs. Walker is tabulating the results, let me just say, for those of you who may not know, Lewisville is very blessed to have a number of volunteers to participate on our boards and committees. We're unique, to a certain extent, of many municipalities in North Carolina. Where the residents who live here have an opportunity to participate in the matters of their government. It is very, very rare that we have an item that comes to this council of any substance before it is not vetted through and heard by a committee and we receive their recommendations. It's as close as you can get to participatory government by all of our residents, and we're very, very pleased to have the volunteers who wish to serve our committees. Have you tabulated?
I have.
Very good.
Mr. Scanlon has been chosen, and the tabulation will be in the minutes next month.
Very good. Congratulations, Mr. Scanlon, welcome to the planning board. It's a very important board that we have, and they've got a lot of work. You're going to be seeing a lot of this fellow right up here, Josh Harold, over the next few months, but thank you for your willingness to serve. I didn't get to recognize Ms. Gallman back there in the back row. Marcy, congratulations on your election to the council. You'll be joining us in December, and we were thanking you during our introductions for your service on the Parks and Recreation Board as chairperson. Just good to see you here as well. Ms. Walker, do you think that Mrs. Sisk would be interested in serving on our utilities committee?
I will certainly ask her.
If you would, council, if there are no objections.
Also our parks and recs.
Also our parks and recs. See if there's, I know we have immediate openings on our utilities, and our parks and recs will have an opening for certain, so if, without council objection, Ms. Walker, if you do that, that would be great. We'd love to, those people who express a willingness to participate, we sure would love to get them involved.
I will do it.
And utilities committee, are openings there, Ms. Walker? Two openings on the utilities committee?
Yes.
Okay, and we don't have any applications currently, so if you're watching at home or you know someone who wishes to serve, our utilities committee deals with matters of primarily sewer, but also other infrastructure and matters that come before the council, and we get the recommendations from the utilities committee before they come here. So if you wish to serve, there is a wonderful opportunity to do that. Please contact Mrs. Walker. She can be reached at Town Hall. Very good. Ms. Walker, an appointment to the Student Leadership Committee.
Yes, we have Ashlyn Sutton, who has asked to become a member of student leadership. She's the daughter of one of our deputies, and she is excited to be here.
Excellent. Councilmembers?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Mrs. Mock makes the motion to approve, Mr. Zinger makes the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Thank you, that is unanimous. Next item, I'll lead us through it, and Ken and Ed, if you have any comments that you'd like to chime into it, this is the following our briefing last week and our review of the manager's performance and contract for the upcoming term. It's the recommendation of the administrative group, as well as the discussion that we've had among the council to offer the manager an extension of his contract for four years at his, at a salary of, I know I've written it down, $111,712. Councilmembers, any questions? Any further discussion?
Motion to approve.
Mr. Green makes the motion to approve. Need a second. Mr. Smith makes the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Thank you, and Mr. Manager?
I bet. I was trying to get your attention.
It's also a matter of the bonus associated with.
That's included in that total salary figure. It isn't? You're exactly correct. You're exactly correct, and I believe the recommendation that also needs to come before council is, based on the manager's performance over the last year, a performance bonus of 2.85%, which is 95% of his 3% potential salary increase for his performance and evaluation. Entertain a motion on that?
But let's be clear, that's lump sum, right? This is not an increase in salary.
That is a bonus. Exactly, that's performance bonus, yes.
Right. I'll make a motion to approve that.
I'll second it.
Mr. Franklin makes the motion, Mrs. Mock makes the second. Any further discussion? Very good. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimous. Okay, Hank, sleep well tonight, at least until tomorrow. Thank you, council. And I'd like to thank both Councilman Sadler and Councilman Smith for your participation in our admin group that's been meeting with the manager over the course of this last year. I think it's been a great benefit to us to understand how the challenges affect our manager and staff, but I, hopefully, it's been a benefit to our manager to hear council perspectives as we assist him in ways that he can do his job better and serve the residents of our town. So thank you, gentlemen, very much for your service. Josh, I believe you are up.
So the first item would be Resolution 2017054, which is setting a public hearing for Thursday, December 14th, 2017, for an amendment to our UDO, specifically L152, which is our Lewisville Rural Overlay District Ordinance. As I briefed you in last week, this is to clear up some inconsistencies that we have currently in the language with some maps and some other issues, as well as add some new conditions to the overlay district, and I can go in any kind of detail you want me to go in for this portion.
Councilmembers, any questions for Josh?
Can we get a printed copy of that, rather than trying to read it off the iPad, of all the changes that are going to be in that?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Well, you said these are essentially text changes, is that right? There are no substantive changes?
There are substantive changes. There's been, there are some issues with a map, for one, that, not to go into too much detail, but we define GMA areas one way, and the map that we currently have on file defines them a different way, so they're confusing. The rest of the language is contradictory to itself, so the new portions will be a little more clear, and there'll be some changes that are new as well.
And this comes to us with recommendation of the planning board?
That's correct.
Okay. Any other questions for Josh?
And I assume that you will brief us in more detail in the December briefing session.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Councilmembers, this is to set the public hearing. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Mr. Smith makes the motion, Mr. Zinger makes the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, that's unanimous for Thursday, December 14th. Josh, I believe you're up again with Reynolds Run Preliminary Subdivision Plat.
Mrs. Walker, do you mind to put the plat up on the screen, please? I don't want to take up too much time, I want to try to hit the high points on this and give some time for questions for Mr. Ahair, as well as Mr. Causey, the owner and the engineer on the project. What you have before you is Ordinance 2017049, which will be approving a planning board review of a preliminary subdivision plat off of LaLonda Drive, known as the Reynolds Run subdivision. I think it's still stated on this map as LaLonda Acres, but it has been changed. The project, the total project is about nine acres. If you'll recall, back in April of this year, they went through a rezoning process in front of council. They were approved from R20 to RS9S zoning, and I will comment that there were some conditions placed at the rezoning hearing, and they are following these conditions thus far, and I'll go over a couple of those. I think they originally had planned 32 lots. The condition was placed that they only do 29 lots, which is what they have on the plat. They requested to do two stormwater facilities. Those are both on this plat as well, and the stormwater BMPs, of course, will be certified. And sidewalks internal to the subdivision and not on LaLonda Drive, there will be sidewalks on both sides of these roads internally inside of the subdivision, as well as street trees, as you can see on the plat. This did come before a technical review committee that did comment, they've made changes which are apparent on this. You are seeing the changes incorporated. It's also to go through planning board, and they did approve this unanimously last month, I believe. Lots 27, 28, and 29 down at the bottom will be the only three lots that will have driveways that will connect with LaLonda Drive. The other driveways will all come off the new interior streets. And this does follow our comprehensive plan update that we did in 2015, as well as a legacy plan done through Winston-Salem Forsyth County. This is GMA3 area, which is suburban neighborhoods, and all the lots have to be a minimum of 9,000 square feet for the RS9S zoning. The street widths are 27 feet. There is interconnectivity. You'll see the stub streets that are joined to adjacent properties, and I will say that we will, the staff would like to see the stub streets go a little farther towards the edge of the property to be as close to adjoining properties as possible. I don't know that it's shown on this plat to go as far as it needs to go. As I mentioned, sidewalks are on both sides of the street. The street names are on here. They do meet the one tree per 45 linear feet, plus the one tree additional per conventional, per lot in a conventional subdivision, so all the trees are accounted for. The only real issue that we saw, staff and TRC, as well as planning board with the plat, were a couple of lots didn't meet the width requirement, but they have assured us, and the planning board did vote on approving the preliminary plat, as long as the lots did meet the width on the final plat. Now, those, I believe, are 14 and 17. Fire code has been met, you've got your ingress and egress has been addressed with your multiple connections there. They are doing a type 3 buffer down on. They are doing a type III buffer down on Reynolds Road, which is required by our UDO. And that's about it for me, for the highlights. I'll be glad to answer questions, or we can have Mr. Ahair or Mr. Causey come up and maybe answer questions as well.
Very good. Council members, any questions for Josh, or our developers? We're good. And a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve with the staff recommendations for the extended stub streets. Second.
Very good. Mr. Zinger makes the motion, Mr. Sadler makes the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, that's unanimous, and gentlemen, thank you for your investment in Lewisville.
Also, I just wanted to tell you that the extension of that stub street information is in the ordinance, so that they must comply.
Okay, good. Joyce, you want to close the road?
I do.
Okay.
Okay, this is the annual Christmas parade. Each year now, as a requirement of the DOT, we have to provide an ordinance that officially closes the road with the route and all of the information. So this is the ordinance for this year's Christmas parade. The information that Ms. Mock asked to be added has been added with all of the adjacent road.
Very good. Any questions for Ms. Walker? Entertain a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Mrs. Mock makes the motion, Mr. Smith makes the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, that is unanimous. Joyce, we have another request for annexation.
That we do. This is a request from the Winston-Salem Forsyth County School System to annex lots into the town for the new middle school. Last week, council directed me to investigate the annexation request. I have done so, and I have provided in your information a certificate of sufficiency that approves on that. Based on that information, I have provided also a resolution for council to set a public hearing on the question of their annexation at the December 14th meeting.
Very good. Any questions to Ms. Walker? Entertain a motion?
I have a question, Mike. I think we mentioned this the other night, but that property, that's the entire property they own, right? Not just what's going to be the middle school?
They own more than that.
Right.
That was just the property that was not in the town.
Okay, got you.
And they needed to annex that in, in order to complete a full design.
Thank you.
Any additional questions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Franklin makes the motion, Ms. Mock makes the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, that's unanimous. I guess, Mrs. Walker, you need some money to advertise it in the newspaper, right?
I do.
Okay.
And hopefully you will pass that budget amendment, so I can do it.
Very good. Motion, council?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Ms. Mock makes the motion, Mr. Smith makes the second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, that's also unanimous. Hank, this is our addition to the agenda tonight for our traffic analysis study.
Yes, you should have two pieces of paper at your station, one for the budget amendment, and then there is a text sheet on the backside, this was prepared by our town planner, Josh Harold. The top part of it is Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools is conducting their own traffic impact analysis in connection with the new school up at Robin Hood Road in Lewisville-Viana. They're going to be looking at the intersections of Robin Hood Road and Lewisville-Viana Road, Lewisville-Viana Road and Dexter, Lewisville-Viana Road and Poplar Ridge, and then the school access road on Robin Hood Road. The town of Lewisville, and these are things that would be traditionally required of the school system in connection with their driveway permits with the North Carolina Department of Transportation. The town of Lewisville is interested in participating with the school system in their traffic impact analysis, and expanding that some to include Lewisville-Viana Road and Yadkinville Road, Lewisville-Viana Road and Franklin Road, and then the traffic engineer will also evaluate the feasibility of converting the signalized intersection at Lewisville-Viana Road and Robin Hood Road into a roundabout. This additional fee for the town's participation comes to $5,000. The work is to commence within the next three to five weeks.
And this is with the same people that the school system is using, correct?
Yes, sir, it's the same engineering company, they're just going to expand their work to include what we desire.
Okay.
Any questions for our manager? I'll entertain a motion? Mr. Smith makes the motion, Mr. Zinger makes the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, that is also unanimous. We have no unfinished business. Hank, you want to take us down to our administrative reports for this evening?
First on our administrative reports is the upcoming events and town holidays, and the upcoming events at Shalford Square is what I was referring to. The first is tomorrow, on the 10th, town holiday, town offices will be closed in observance of Veterans Day. Then it'll move us into, I'm sorry, November 23rd, which is Thursday, that is the first of two closures. We're closed on Thursday of Thanksgiving, and then Friday, the 24th, the day after Thanksgiving, Town Hall will be closed as well.
Very good, and of course, you knew Tuesday was Election Day, we've all spoken to that. Again, congratulations to all of those who will be serving the town over the next two years. This morning, the town of Lewisville hosted the quarterly sheriff's meeting, where he meets with mayors and managers of the Forsyth County municipalities, with the exception of Winston-Salem and Kernersville, since they have their own police forces. And we discussed law enforcement and issues that are facing the Sheriff's Department and the challenges that they have, and I think it's a great opportunity for us to participate with the other municipalities and hear that we all share many of the same concerns, and we're all working together for a safer Forsyth County. We were pleased to host that. Next meeting will be hosted by the town of Clemmons, the village of Clemmons. Ms. Walker, you want to tell us about North Carolina League of Municipalities' Fall Regional Meeting here?
Yes, they will be meeting here next week. This is a meeting that the league will be doing all over the state, and Lewisville will be handling the meeting here for this region. This will help our insurance decision-making and managers and finance officers will be attending.
Very good. Josh, speaking of hosting meetings, I believe you hosted the planners in Forsyth County today, and had a productive discussion, I think it centered around our Northeast Area Plan, and our city-county planning director, Paul Norby, was in attendance, along with Margaret Basset with the MPO, and Megan Ledbetter from Clemmons, and who else was with you? Jeff Hadling from Kernersville, and I think you had a really good discussion. We are always pleased to host groups in Lewisville because it gives us an opportunity, number one, to show off our fabulous Town Hall. We are always met with, gosh, you guys have such a beautiful town, you have such a beautiful Town Hall, I wish we could do things as well as, I kind of threw it in this last part, as well as you're doing it. But we do, we are quite proud of our facility and our town, so we're glad when we can host groups from around the county, around the state to be here. Ms. Walker, our tree lighting ceremony?
Tree light, excuse me, tree lighting will be on Friday, the 1st of December, at 7:15 at Shalford Square. We look for all children to come and see a certain person, dresses in red.
Wonderful. Tracy, you've got announcement about photos, anything you want to tell us? This will be held Thursday, December 7th, following, before our town, that'll be our town council briefing, right?
Yep.
Yes.
Anything you want to instruct the council members on how to wear, what to wear, how to look?
Well, I'm not the one taking the photo.
But you are an experienced photographer.
Yes. I certainly am. I would, well, I would, depending on the placement, height is one thing, so if we got people standing in the back, we might want to use heels. Yeah, I would wear solid colors. You can see in the photos, some of them stripes could be, but be professional.
Very good.
Dark colors kind of get lost, so.
Excellent, very good. And we do, from time to time, put you on the spot and ask you questions that you aren't prepared to answer, but you did a very good job tonight.
Yeah, we've had, you know, had the opportunity to photograph the Shalvinge Festival, we had a great turnout for that, and also the Wrexford store, which is great. We've put some photos online, we're working on that to find better access for the community to access the photos.
Great, thank you, Tracy. Ms. Walker, you want to talk to us about the Christmas parade, please?
December 10th of this year, it's always at 3 o'clock, it's a Sunday, second Sunday of December. We look for everyone to come out, and let's hope the weather is great.
A chill in the air, maybe, this year?
Maybe a chill, but not like it was last year.
One, two, three.
Yes.
One parade, second Sunday at 3:00 P.M.
Ms. Walker, if you also want to. I'd like to cover the next item, which is the oath of office.
Yes, our newly elected mayor, who's really our only elected mayor, and the rest of the council, will be taking the oath at the meeting on the 14th of December. I will be covering everything with you at your briefing to make sure you understand how we do the old council versus the new council, so.
The outgoing council versus the old council, is that, would that be a better way to phrase it, maybe?
The outgoing and the incoming, yes.
Very good, okay.
Not the old and the new.
I'm there. Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, we do hold a briefing session the first Thursday of every month, and at the briefing session, it is from time to time necessary for us to take actions on items that are of a timely nature. Hank, if you'll report out those actions that we took at this last Thursday's briefing for our record tonight.
Yes, sir, we have the appointment of TAC alternate council member, Ed Smith. The TAC is Transportation Advisory Committee, that's a representative to the MPO. Our main representative is Mayor Mike Horn, so Mr. Ed Smith will be the alternate. We took care of Resolution 2017057, directing the clerk to investigate the annexation request received from Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools. We approved Resolution 2017056, approving a contract with Elite Landscaping Services and Nursery Incorporated for Christmas decorations in an amount of $11,336. We approved Ordinance 2017045, amending budget Ordinance 2017020, in an amount of $797 to purchase a new dual-motorized movement in order to repair the clock at the square. And then, of course, we are doing the work ourselves, we just are purchasing the equipment for it. Next, we approved Ordinance 2017046, amending budget Ordinance 2017020, in an amount of $3,746 to repair, to fund the repairs of Town Hall from water damage. Then we moved on to Ordinance 2017047, amending budget Ordinance 2017020, in an amount of $7,500 to fund the contract with Foothills Planning for Design Services related to the Northeast Area Plan. We covered ordinance and approved Ordinance 2017039, amending Chapter 16 Parks Recreation and Cultural Development, Article II Policies Administrative Update. And then we approved Ordinance 2017048, amending budget Ordinance 2017020, to make Schedule C wording of the fee schedule consistent with our town code. This was an administrative update. And then lastly, we had Conrad Farm discussion acknowledging that the special use permit approval also approved the preliminary subdivision platte submitted in connection with the special use permit for the Conrad Farm subdivision.
Very good, thank you. Mr. Smith, thank you for your agreement to serve as an alternate of our TAC, your first meeting will be next week? And it should be action-packed. Very good. This is the third opportunity this evening for anyone in the public that wishes to address the council, share your comments with us. If there's anybody in the audience, please come forward. Anybody wish to address the council?
Excuse me, mayor, isn't this the time that the students from Reagan are supposed to speak, that their teacher wanted them to stand up and actually speak?
Yeah, I was going to, yeah, I guess we can do that now. Your civics instructor had called over earlier and said that each one of you would be prepared to stand up and give one minute on your impressions of town government. So who would like to be the first one to speak this evening? I'm just kidding you, you don't have to do that.
I'm going to take her.
We're just glad to have you here, and it's always a pleasure to have.